It's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order, invite everyone to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you put the roll, please?
Jim Dombeck.
Here.
Steve Nelson.
Here.
Jim Shiloh.
Here.
Julie Davy.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Eric Jones. Krista Wren, here. Forms present.
Just in deference to Eric, Eric Jones is serving as an election judge, so he's not able to join us this evening, but he's still doing his civic duty nonetheless. Hopefully he'll vote his results as they come in. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Wren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Dombeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Wren?
Yes.
Dombeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Spartan Awards.
We have one student to recognize tonight, Cindy Fabrizius, took second place this spring in the IESA State Track Meet for pole vault, and she's here tonight to get her ribbon, so, and her medal.
Congratulations. Can I put you on the spot and ask you a question that I've always wanted to know? What made you want to be a pole vaulter, of all things?
My dad was a pole vaulter in high school, in high school, and he wanted me and my brother to do it, and I was thinking, well, it'd be all about, so.
Oh, great. But was it scary to get involved? How was it the first time you pole vaulted? I want to know.
It was fine. It wasn't scary or anything.
Oh, you were used to seeing other people do it, so it wasn't so bad?
Yeah, we went back and watched my dad's old tapes of it, and watched him do it.
And if he could do it, you could do it. Okay, I understand how that works. But, you know, I would have been scared witless. So congratulations.
How high did you jump?
Seven six.
Oh, my gosh.
Wow.
Excellent.
Was that a personal bust, or?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, that's awesome.
I went in there, like, the lowest seated at six-six, so I got my yard.
Wow.
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 Awesome.
She has one more year for us to do it again.
Yeah.
She's in eighth grade this year.
Champion!
Yeah.
Hopefully you're going to continue to do this, and by the time you're in high school, you'll be sending state records. That'd be great. Congratulations.
Her dad also went to college on a pole vault scholarship.
Oh, wow.
Cool, that would be neat. There's an incentive.
There's a ten-feet next year.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Next item is audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to the next item then. Communications, correspondence, informational items, letters and newsletters, telling us about all the wonderful new laws that are coming our way. FOIA requests. There was a FOIA request, but it's been answered. Suspension report. I thought we were done with that, but one person had to make it. Committee reports.
I didn't make it to the last SCF meeting. I had a conflict. I don't know if Steve had anything he wanted to share for her conversations.
I couldn't make it either. I had a conflict myself, so I...
I know they're interviewing.
Yeah. They had an interview previously, and then they had another interview this afternoon for a new director. So we've had some conversation. I've had some conversation with Laura Gilmore, who's the current chair, but she's done June 30th.
Yep.
Michelle Afara is going to be the new chair, although I heard recently that Laura will stay on and kind of help until there's a new director and kind of open the transition. But I wasn't able to attend either, so I don't have a report.
I haven't been there.
Any other committee reports? I will say that I did attend the Excellence in Education Awards yesterday, and three of the five award recipients were from Sycamore School District. And those were Drayton Eggleston, Lisa Winters, and our own Nicole Stuckert, who won as the Administrator of the Year for the county. So, you know, to take three out of five awards throughout the whole county, I think is very impressive and says a lot for the quality of individuals that we hire and that we have working for the district. So, well, congratulations, Nicole. Anything else for committee reports? And we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
I have a couple of agenda items under the superintendent's report. First, we're going to start off with Mr. Carrick, who arrived right on time. He's going to give us a summary of how activities in athletics went for the school year. So, Johnson, you want the clicker or you want me to drive?
No, you can drive.
Okay.
Get your foot on the gas pedal.
I'll let you do the talking.
All right, so we had a really productive year. Everything was in the season that it was intended to be. We did very little rearranging early on in the year. Through the, we'll say through the winter, there were some schools that were getting hit by different procedures through the COVID protocols. We did not have to cancel or delay anything based on what we were doing. So again, that's a credit to the protocols that we set in place, and our coaches, athletes, and parents doing the right things and doing what we asked them to do. So, to me, I thought that was a pretty good deal. We did have to move some things because of other schools had issues, but none of those were instigated by us, so that was good. So we'll just go through the slides. Golf team, when you look at the number in parentheses, that's the number of participants we had this year, whether it's high school or middle school. So, the boys' golf team finished third in the conference. The girls, we entered five girls in the tournament when you can enter six, and they still finished second, so it was awesome. And then Brianna Shumun qualified for state and advanced to the second day of the state tournament, which is a huge accomplishment. That puts her in the top 30 for the state, so it was a great weekend for her. We'll go to the next one. Tennis, again, a great season. They had almost 60 girls out for tennis.
Is that high? I'd seen, I was surprised by that number.
It's usually about four, in the mid-40s, so there was a little bit higher than normal. But, you know, they do a great job of playing, getting kids exhibition matches, and so it was awesome. And they had several girls who were all-conference. They finished third. Ashley Olson was at state. We'd been going west, and so we got sent east last year for sectionals, which tends to be a little tougher. So, we've adjusted our schedule so we see those teams sooner in the year rather than the sectional. So, anyway, they had a great year, and so we'll go to the next one. Volleyball, again, had a great season. The varsity finished second in the conference. They ended up getting beat by Keanlyn in the regional, who advanced all the way to the sectional final. But again, they had a really great season. Kaylee Sharkey, who's going to be attending Mississippi State, was the conference MVP, so that was a great accomplishment for her. Boys soccer, they won the conference, the regular season and their tournament. They won their regional, and then ended up losing a close match at the sectional. But again, another great season, and Coach Baka then announced that he'll be stepping down, and we've hired Kevin Bickley, who will be running both our boys and our girls' programs now. Cross-country, I mean, their numbers are just going through the roof. They finished second in the conference. They were fifth at the regional. Lily Baker ended up qualifying for state. Again, had a great state meet, was in the top 45. You know, the thing to think about is, five years ago, when Adam Zentovich came, we had about 12 girls out, and now he's got that program in the mid-30s, so that's awesome. And so we're great, very glad for that. Boys cross-country, finished second in the conference. They won their regional, and then they, by their placing at sectionals, advanced to the state. To show you how good our sectional is, they were sixth at the sectional but 14th at state. So, I would say, if you get out of our sectional, you've got a pretty good chance to do well. So, but again, another great season for cross-country. Girls swimming, we don't get a lot of information from DeKalb. I know that they went east as well for sectionals and had a tough go, but four of the 10 swimmers were Sycamore kids, and without the co-ops, that's four kids that wouldn't have got the chance to do that. So, we'll move on. Football, again, another great season for them. Kind of a common theme for us. Made it to the state semifinals, lost to a good Fenwick team that went on to win the state championship. But again, a good group of kids, and a lot of those kids that are on that list right there, a lot of them are coming back, so that's good news for them. Boys bowling, second place in the conference. They were fourth in the regional to advance to the sectional. So, again, our bowling program seems to be, continues to be, a program that can move and advance through the state series. And we'll see the same with the girls on the next slide. Well, maybe not. So, go ahead. We'll get to the girls eventually. The dance team was a very young team. They graduated a lot of girls in that COVID year, so they weren't sure how this was going to go. And they just kept getting better and better as the year went on, placed fifth at the sectional, which advances them to the state meet. So they were very happy about that. So that's four or five years in a row they've been to state as well. So we'll go to the next one. Cheer, finishing the top half of the conference. Our conference is really good in cheer. And again, our program continues to climb the ladder, and again, they're a younger group, so we hope that that, maybe we see a top-three finish and maybe some advancement in the sectional as well. Gymnastics, another co-op with DeKalb. Again, about half the team is about from Sycamore, the other half's from DeKalb. Annabella Simpson is a Sycamore student. She finished third on the balance beam overall at the state meet. And as you can see, they were regional champs, sectional champs, and brought home a third-place trophy from the state meet. So, we're really proud of all those girls. Now we get to bowling. Second in the conference. They were third at the regional, finished fourth at the sectional, and did a great job. Brandy Stover advanced to the second day as an individual, so again, another great season for girls bowling. Wrestling, we're the Interstate Eight Conference Champions. They won the regional and advanced to the sectional, and just came up a little bit short. They were one weight class short all year. They only had 13 of the 14 weights filled. And we needed the right weight to be drawn, because they determine where it starts by a random draw. And on our way down there, Coach Nelson's like, as long as we draw 195, I think we'll be all right. We drew 195. We had to lay our cards on the table, and it didn't quite work out the way we wanted, but they had a great season. So again, we're looking forward to seeing what they do this year. By the way, I'll go back to the wrestling. I don't have a problem telling that story, because my son's the one that was at the 195. Had to bump him to 195. And if he wins, we're sitting good. If he loses, we're not. So that should tell you how that match went. Nonetheless, I do want to mention, though, that Brayden Pete did make the state finals. Lincoln Cooley was sixth, so we had two state place winners, which was awesome. Now we'll jump to the next one. Girls basketball, you know, talk about a fun team to watch. They, you know, they took on all-comers this year. Bowling Brook called us, looking for a game. We had lost the game due to some COVID things, and Adam says, what do you think? I was like, I'm all for it. He said, well, the only way we can do it is if we host it. We have like two days' notice, and so finding workers was going to be an issue. So basically, we said, hey, we put it out to the community. Anybody that brings a canned good, you get in free. We're not going to worry about it. But we raised, gave all that, those canned goods to the food pantry, so it ended up being a great game. Bowling Brook was ranked in the top 10. We were in the top 10, so it was an awesome atmosphere. They went on to win the conference and the regional and won the first sectional in the school's history. So a great group of girls. Faith Fierbach was also the MVP there, too, so. Boys basketball, kind of a, I don't want to say disappointing year, but not the year that they wanted to have. But again, the kids played hard. They got to play a lot of kids, so ended up finishing fifth in the conference, and, you know, they had a great experience. Boys swimming, difference between going east and west. Boys go west to Byron. They win the sectional. And then Jacob Graemer, who's a sophomore, finished ninth in the 50-yard freestyle and 11th in the 100-yard. So we'll get some exciting things out of Jacob the next couple of years as well. Girls soccer, Interstate Eight Conference Champions. Again, a younger group. They had three really good senior leaders, and everybody else was pretty young. So they kind of took them under their wing, and as the years went on, you saw better and better play, and it was great to see, and culminated with that conference championship at the end of the year. Track and field, had a successful year. They continued to improve. They had several individuals and relays that were close to qualifying for state. We had a lot of third-place finishes at sectional, which, you know, you need to get second. But Carissa Clausen made the finals of the high jump, ended up not placing, but made the second day. And Mallory Mori in pole vault, I don't know if she got the school record, but she was within inches of the school record all year. So, and they're both juniors and will be back. Boys track, had another great season. They qualified all four relays for state, and Kate Nemmer qualified in the individual 800. And then Pete texts me, Pete Picconi, the coach, texts me at the end of the state meet, and he goes, I'd been watching, but his comment to me was, crazy eights. Everybody plays eighth today. So they got, Kane got eighth, and the two relays that placed, that made the finals, were eighth as well. So, but a phenomenal season for the track team. Softball, finished third in the conference. Our conference, the two teams that finished ahead of us were LaSalle Peru, who was ranked third in the state, and Keanlyn, who was in the top 10. Keanlyn ended up winning their regional and the sectional. LaSalle Peru didn't win their regional, but they got beat by the number-two team in the state, so the two-and-three team in the state were in the same regional. So that's just a bad draw right there. But softball was a fairly young team. Paige Colley set the all-time homerun record. In her two varsity seasons, she had 20-plus homeruns, so she's moving on to play next year in college. Baseball, talk about a group that got some momentum towards the first or second week of April and just continued to build on that. At one point, they had like a 17-game winning streak, won the conference championship, kind of dominated the regional, and then had a come-from-behind sectional semifinal. They were down 6-0 in the start of the game. Battled back to win. It was a crazy night, because that was the night that the gas leak was on 64, and somebody lit the brush pile out at the park. But we hosted it. It's the most people I've ever seen at a baseball game at Sycamore. If the, somebody made a comment to me, if the Liners would have got crowds like this, they never would have left. So, I mean, there was, I mean, 1,000 people. It was Little League. The Little League had their games going on, and I don't think any of those kids or parents left. They just went from their game over to ours. It was a great atmosphere, really fun to be a part of. So then, I just listed all our clubs and participations, and some of the clubs had better participation than is listed here, and that has been addressed, that they need to be participating. Only club that we don't require that is the GSA club, because there's some anonymity, and some of those kids would like to keep. But the rest of those, I've since talked to some of these advisors. The speech team was about 10. The only one that registered was the one that qualified for the sectional. So we'll get that straightened out for next year. But these groups, all, you know, provided a great experience for our kids. The, okay, we can go to the next one. Middle school clubs, again, the jazz band and choir and the strings folks were in with the high school numbers. So that's why I didn't realize that, because oftentimes they work together, so they just had everybody signed up under one. But again, offering, you know, getting to see participation at those middle school clubs as well is great. And then I just went through our fall sports. I apologize for it not being lined up like that, like it should be. But we do start our fall seasons August 8th, and then that couple weeks later, everybody starts their season. The first event is, the boys' golf team will go to Belvedere North, so that'll get everybody going. And then the Taste of Black and Gold is August 19th, and we'll introduce all the athletes for all our programs at that. We have added girls' golf as a standalone program this year. So unofficially, their first meet is August 29th, but we have about six meets we need to fill, to fill their schedule. So I'm guessing we'll find a tournament prior to that time. Go to the winter. So everybody starts at kind of different times, but again, we have all those ready to go. Cheer and Dance just gave me the competitions they want to go to, so we'll fill those five spots. And then moving forward to the spring, we have almost all our first contests set. Again, we've added boys' tennis, and we need to, we have the conference game scheduled, but we don't have any of their non-conference stuff scheduled yet. So looking forward to what next year has to bring. And then I just want to say thank you to the board for the support you guys give us throughout the year. We're pretty lucky in Sycamore. We have great facilities. Our kids, you know, we don't really go without. Between your generosity and the generosity of the Booster Club, you know, we are allowed to provide our kids what they need to be successful. And we have some things that are, we have some kids that succeed well on the court or the field, but I think the successes we see in the classroom, that's why I listed all the academic all-conference kids. You know, Faith Fierbach was honorable mention, all-state for the IHSA Academic All-State Team. We've had a student be named to the IHSA Student Advisory Board, which is good. And so there's people around the state looking at Sycamore and saying, hey, they're doing things the right way there, and a lot of that comes from what you allow us to do. So I appreciate that, and our coaches appreciate that. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Yes, sir.
What are we doing based on Sycamore, or Sycamore, based on Sandwich's decision regarding football?
So it doesn't really affect us this year. We have a partnership with the Kishawaki River. And so that sends the biggest seven schools and the smallest seven schools together. So the smallest seven schools are scrambling to find their opponent. Sandwich is playing a JV, a limited JV schedule, so those juniors and sophomores can play. And then they have, they have 17 sophomores and about 16 freshmen. So they're going to play some freshman games, and they're going to play some sophomore JV games with those juniors, so that they can build that back in. They had a group, they thought they were going to have 24 kids, and they had 12 come out, or 12 register. So as far as I've been told, their plan is this is a one-year blip, and that they're going to get back on track. It's been less than a month, so we really haven't had a chance to talk to it about it as a group. But I know their administration is pretty adamant about getting things back the way they need to be, so. But, yeah, that was...
A little surprise.
Yeah. When we got that email, I was like, whoa, what?
Johnson, do you see, I know you present, you present the numbers to us of who's gone out in a particular year, but just a progression of a particular sport? Or maybe a decline in a certain sport? Like, is there enough to read into that? Or is it just kind of like what Sandwich is going through? There's some up and down here, and there's really nowhere to judge it, but...
I think for us, we've been pretty steady. There's some ups and downs within, sometimes you see low numbers within a class. Give you an example, a few years ago, when I was, I mean, 10 years ago, I was wrestling coach. I knew we were going to have a low-number year, because when they came in as freshmen, I had one. And when you have a low-number group like that, you know, it's just going to, your numbers are going to be low all the way through, so. But our coaches do a great job of recruiting kids out, and if somebody leaves one sport, they're not afraid to go and, if they, hey, you didn't like this, you might want to try this. And that's, you know, our, we just, the programs we have at the middle school do a great job with numbers as well. So I think we're trending about where we were. We took a little bit of a dip two years ago, a year ago, that 2021 year. Some people decided they didn't want to participate just because of the mitigations and whatnot. But this year, when restrictions were lifting, the more they lifted, the more participation we got, so.
So you don't really see like a, every, hey, we used, the tennis numbers are just growing every year. There's just a big tennis movement in the, like, just for an example. It just kind of ebbs and flows. It just depends, and as you mentioned, you may fall off of a sport, but maybe you're going to another sport.
Right.
So the number is still there, it's just in another sport.
I think one of the reasons that our numbers are so good in the majority of our sports right now is... right now is, just like you guys were talking about hiring good people, we have good coaches, actually, great coaches, that kids want to go play for.
Sure.
You know, Rob Majeris does a great job with tennis. I mean, if, to keep 59 girls happy in tennis, I mean, when, you know, you're playing two singles and three doubles, so.
Sure.
You know, and then he, but he finds exhibition matches for them. He coaches them up. I mean, that's the one thing I'll say about all our coaches is, it doesn't make any difference if you're a freshman or a senior, or the middle school for that matter. They coach them, they coach them like they need to be, that they want to be coached, and I think that keeps kids coming back. And when we, when we see dips in numbers, sometimes that's because the, the coach isn't getting the job done. And right now, I think we're in a position where those numbers are, are at where they are, and growing because of the people we have.
Thank you. Do, do we, are we going to be taking a survey soon?
Yeah, so we should have taken it this past year, but because we didn't have anything in 20, the spring of 20, so I moved it back a year, so we will be doing the Title IX survey this year. So next year, I'll have a whole bunch of data for you.
It's always interesting.
Yep. Well, what'll be interesting to me is, I mean, the survey for the last three times has pointed, we need to add girls' golf, and we need to add boys' tennis.
Yes.
So that's, to me, what's it going to say now, so.
Yeah, that's sort of what I was thinking, too, so it'll be, it will be interesting.
I'm wondering, is that starting to see lacrosse get closer and closer, and if there's any push or pressure for a lacrosse program?
I, I have not heard that.
Yeah. I think Central's going to, this year or next.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. But they're bigger than us now, so, enrollment-wise.
Yeah.
So I don't know, and they're in a bigger conference, so they're getting pressure from the conference side, too. Yeah, just wondering.
Yeah, the only team, the only team in our league that has lacrosse is, Kalamans has boys.
Boys, yeah.
Just a quick question. In terms of participation in like the surveys you guys were discussing, just, do you know offhand approximately what percentage of students are participating in an extracurricular of some sort?
So...
Just like a ballpark?
At the high school, it's just under 600 kids.
Okay.
Now, if we, if we do the, if we count the kids that do two things or three things, that includes the clubs, too, so.
Right, right.
So we got about half of our kids are doing something, one or more, and another half aren't, and that, that is down a little bit, but I have a feeling that will improve and get us back over half, just because there's going to be more kids involved in clubs this year than there have been.
Well, and that kind of just, as a stepping stone to my, just another question on that, I think extracurriculars are awesome. I think everybody should be doing them. I think as a goal, it'd be great if we had 100% participation. Do you think the, there's a correlation between academics and student participation in extracurriculars, or what do you see as like the main driving piece to the 50% of people who aren't participating?
The people on, that are ineligible at the end of each semester, almost every one of them is a zero-participation person.
Okay.
So, not all, there's a couple that, but almost every one of them is a zero-participation person. So I think there's a direct correlation. The more you're involved, it's going to improve your organizational skills. You have people that are watching your grades. You know, I sent out a report to the in-season programs. We have coaches that email me, hey, can I get the, a grade report for my, for my kids even though we're out of season? I have sponsors that, of clubs that will say, hey, I hear so-and-so's this, can I get a check on everybody? Yeah, and that just takes us, the club's a little more difficult because I can run a bus roster for the athletes, where the clubs don't all have a bus roster, so. We could, I mean, instead of taking five minutes, it takes 15 minutes, so.
And like, we just talked about like teen truth, and like addressing bullying and things like that, and I just, I'm thinking that 50%, they're not involved in a club, they're not involved in the sport. My guess is, you know, there's something, there's some reason that they're not involved. There's some barrier, and I'm just, I'm wondering, is it, is it economic? Is it just interest? Like, there isn't a club that would serve their interests? Do you have any speculation on, like, what might be the barrier to 50%? Or is that just the standard among schools? Is our 50%...
Well, I think it's a little low for us. I'm not sure about other schools, but we have a process, too, that we tell, talk to the kids about. At the beginning of the school year, Tim will have a class meeting with everybody, and he tells them, hey, if there's something that you're interested in starting, go see Mr. Carrick, and he'll give you the process. The process that we have is, you need to find an adult to be the sponsor, preferably an adult in the building. You need to have rules for your organization, so I, it's just not going to be, we're going to get together and hang out. We need to have rules, and then you have some type of leadership structure. So, who, student leadership structure, like, are you going to have a president? Are you going to have, you know, whatever? And when they bring us all that, then Tim and I look it over, and some of them, the teacher will make it a pilot, and then they can get paid. Some of them just volunteer for a year to see if that works, before we even try to make it a pilot. So, we, you know, if people have an idea, there's some that, you know, come and, you know, it's not safe, you know, if somebody wanted to have a, you know, I'm not even sure what that could be, but if it was something detrimental, we wouldn't do it. But if the students come and they want to start something, we usually at least let them try it for a year, so.
So it's not access, then, something?
Yes.
Okay.
And some of it, some of it is economic. Some of them, some kids, when they get done with school, they got to go work a job to help mom and dad, too, so. But...
Well, I think it's great that we have access to these programs.
Yep.
So that's awesome. Thank you for your work on this.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Johnson. Appreciate it.
You bet.
It's been an interesting couple of years in activities, and to have a normal year was, was pretty rewarding. So, Johnson, we appreciate all your work.
Yeah, I'm hopefully on baseball here.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Let me take a minute to get back to the slide deck. There we go. The next item on the superintendent's agenda is actually an update on our MTSS program, so my pleasure to turn things, the clicker, over to Mrs. Tucker, who is going to walk us through an MTSS program update.
Thanks for having me, everyone. I hope I know how to work this. Oh, see, I went the wrong way already. There we go. So I first just wanted to give you some background on what MTSS is, because I know this is something newer to our district, that we are starting to implement at all of our different levels. So MTSS is multi-tiered systems of support, and it's what we formerly used to call response to intervention or response to instruction, RTI. But what's different is MTSS is more based on tiers. So our first tier is tier one, and that's our core curriculum. That's what all of our students receive in all of our buildings from our teachers. And then that next one is tier two. And so none of the tiers replace one another, but build upon each other. So that tier one, when we look at kind of our data, we should have about 85% of our students where that core instruction is meeting their needs. And then we would go to our tier two instruction, so some students might need a little bit more support in an intervention, or maybe more support in an enrichment, and that's about 10% of our students. And then that tier three is just a little bit more intensive, smaller group, a more scripted program, just a little bit more intense of what they need in order to support them. And so we use data to make all of our kind of decisions in what we're doing and what we're implementing. So later this evening, we'll be looking at some of our math data that we did this last school year. But really, MTSS is just being collaborative and being really reflective on our data, our classroom observations, conferencing that we're having with students based off of what students really need. And so we really look at grade level data, through PLC time, building level data, kind of at that BLT meetings that our schools have, and then also our district level data, and that's kind of how we make goals to then improve. MTSS is also really designed to address academics as well as behavioral needs. And so it's really taking an approach of the whole student, of supporting them academically, but then also in that social-emotional learning realm as well. And this isn't just for students who then might notice struggling, but also students who could really benefit some, from some enrichment. And so MTSS is really based upon just what research has said is best practices, and just creating a successful system change. And then, like I mentioned before, MTSS really does apply kind of that behavior component, too, really looking at that social-emotional learning. So in some of our groups and in some of our intervention blocks at the elementary level, kind of what we're talking about for next year, too, is really adding in more of that SEL component, and then thinking, this student is, you know, being really successful academically, but maybe they could benefit from like an executive functioning group, like work on organizing their items, organizing their banners, different things like that, just really evaluating student needs. And then just kind of making that shift with MTSS, too, of that we're not just looking at a few students, but we're really looking at all of our students and our approach with them. And it is just such an amazing collaboration to see all of our classroom teachers and support services really discuss students and their successes in ways that we can help them. This year, with the adding our math interventionists at the elementary level, with our reading specialists, and then the classroom teachers, it was really great to see them talk about all of the students, and it wasn't like my students in my classroom, but really the our student approach. So in our elementary level, we currently have day-to-days that happen three times a year, and those happen after we take math for our benchmark assessment. So those happen in the fall, the winter, and then the spring. And so these are ran by our building principals, and these are for each grade level, and then our specialists are in there, special education teachers are also in there, and any kind of other teachers to kind of look through their data, kind of what trends are you noticing? You know, definitely celebrations, things that we can celebrate, and then areas of like, here's an area of opportunity for us to kind of focus in on. And then at the elementary level in regards to MTSS, I would say we're more at the individual problem-solving level. So what that means is, a teacher might have a student that they might have concerns with academically or socially, and so they would bring them to then the problem-solving team, which is a team made up of our MTSS lead, who applies for that position at each one of our buildings. And then they run them through the meeting of, okay, what kind of supports have you tried within your classroom? And they will kind of give a report of that, give a report of the student data, and they kind of problem-solve to see if we can support that teacher and then helping that student. So I would like us to see that individual problem-solving, but also really looking building-wide, too, of kind of what trends are we noticing within our buildings, and what ways can we support them. This year, we also implemented WIN at all five of our elementary schools, and so WIN stands for what I need. And as we talk more about personalized learning and customized learning, this is probably one of the closest initiatives that we've done to really work towards that, of really talking about students, talking about where they're at academically, where they're at behaviorally, and kind of how we can group students in order to support them in what they need. I know at a few buildings, this was their first time where they were able to like provide an enrichment group for students who might not be in our Walk to Learn program, but could really benefit from some enrichment, and so they were able to make a group. Some of our buildings also got created. There is a building where a PE teacher loved math, and he had an open time within his schedule, so he would take a group then, too, and provide math instruction for them. So MTSS does get creative with your designing of things, that you really are looking at all of the resources, including your people that you have available, and kind of pulling as we see the need.
So, so how do we deliver those services? Is there like an organized way to make sure that students that need the interventions get, get?
Yes. So WIN, right now, at the elementary building, is a 40-minute block for each grade level throughout the day. And so we did have to get a little creative. We realized that some of our students who would need reading support would also really benefit from some math support, and so our specialists would get creative with scheduling of, you know what, I'm going to take them on these days for a 40-minute reading intervention, and then you can take them on these other two days and give them a 40-minute math intervention. We were looking a little bit flexible with that, and with scheduling next year, we're looking at either keeping at that 40-minute block or splitting it, so that students could get the most minutes out of our resources that we have available. But how WIN was scheduled this past school year was everyone had a 40-minute block, and so then it made all of the grade-level teachers on that team available. It had our reading specialists, if there's a reading para, our math specialists available, and then, like I said, schools really did pull other resources and other people that they had available during that time, too. Or if we saw like one of our special ed teachers running a corrective reading group, and we had a student who isn't in special ed and might not qualify, but would really benefit from that reading intervention, we were able to put that student in that group to then receive that instruction for them.
So, so you feel that every, every student that needs this kind of intervention is able to get?
I would say the students that we were most worried about, we most definitely made sure that they were receiving those minutes that they needed. I do think it's an area of growth for us, too, to make sure that those students that we're most worried about are receiving those instructional minutes.
Well, it looks like from the empirical data that whatever you're doing is, seems to be working.
Right.
And I appreciate the fact that we actually have empirical data here as opposed to, you know, anecdotal stuff.
Yes. So I'll go over that now, too. And kind of our theme for tonight that I've just been hearing is just from last night's Excellence in Education, and then Johnson talking about our coaching, is just the excellent educators that we have here in Sycamore, and how lucky we are, that they care just so deeply about our students and their success here. So this is data from our math, so the fall, and then also the spring is the one that's below. And so throughout this year, we've really been talking about like, okay, how do we measure success? And what would success kind of look like for us? And so in my realm of MTSS, I'm looking at that tiered data. I obviously want most of our students within that tier one range, and then kind of as we go up that percentage, those groups of students get a little bit smaller. And so I will also mention that this year, I haven't looked at previous data, but just kind of through conversations with Chris and our teaching and learning team, this year, we grew and made great gains in math, and I think that's a direct response to what Lisa did with our math specialists, and then those math specialists being in our buildings, working directly with students and also teachers, and being able to like, hey, I noticed this about this student. What do you think about trying this out? And just really having those conversations. So that was something we noticed, and we felt like that was a really great success for us, too, that we had just implemented, you know, those people that we sourced for our students, and we did see some great gains with that. So, we love to see, like, I would say, a 3% to 5% range. I believe that was Chris's goals in the past, to kind of see that growth. So here, we had a percentage of students in that tier one, 83%, and then in the spring, we came out 91% in North, which was really great to see. And then we have reading, which we saw some really great growth and gains, too. And so obviously, I love to see that percentage go up, but I also really look at the percentage within that tier three and that tier two, to see if that shrunk, because that means those students are making gains and kind of closing that gap and getting that better understanding, too. And then we have North Grove, which was great to see. Their tier three, like, got cut in half almost. So that was really great to see with math. And then their reading, that really grew, too, with what they were working on over there. And then we have South Prairie, which also showed really great gains. And as we kind of look through these different buildings, every building made really great gains, which I think is just such a success of seeing that percentage of growth happening throughout the year, and especially coming back after the past couple of years to see students performing like this. And then South Prairie's reading, really great there. And then Southeast really did some great growing also. When we talk about kind of making those other tiers a little bit smaller, that When we talk about kind of making those other tiers a little bit smaller, that was really amazing to see too. And then West also. So they all did a really amazing job. Before I go to the middle school round, do you guys have any questions about the elementary?
I guess just maybe it's a question, maybe it's a comment. Do you feel that, I mean, obviously they're getting into more of an individualized area of need, but also you, and you kind of mentioned it before, the different voice, hearing it from a different voice. I mean, I see it from my own kids where they have a perspective of, well, I think it's really cool, you know, like I'm psychoanalyzing their whole thing from the board perspective and as a parent, so they're getting flooded with questions with both hats on. But and to hear it from a third, two third graders, it's interesting, but they talk about all the different teachers they've worked with, like, and I think that that's cool. It's not just like, I think reflecting on myself, like I had a third grade teacher, that was it. But like being able to be exposed to all these different people, that some that they really like, some that, you know, they appreciate for other reasons and like, do you think that that is also like being able to see all these different people and not just having one person's way of teaching it? And I know, I know I'm not saying there's canning their way, but they're getting that different voice hearing it. Is that a help?
Yeah, I think that's a huge part too, is being able to learn like other teachers' teaching styles and perspective, or maybe even they have like a different trick or a different word that then just like sticks with them. I also love how you brought up like how they were able to work with so many different teachers. And so some things that I got back from some parents this past school year was they were, who was a student who maybe would always get pulled out for reading intervention or, you know, pulled out for more intense instruction. They just said like, I think WIN is so great because it shows that we all have things that we can work on. And so so many times some students would get pulled from classrooms for certain services and needs that they need to help them, but it would always make them feel a certain way. And so with that, it really just helped to make them realize like, we all have things we can work on and become better at. And so I think that was just a really great thing that we heard from a lot of parents too. And then students being reflective in that process too of like, hey, I'm struggling with this, this is something I could be working on during WIN or ask about during WIN time too. I'm hoping this year we can build a little bit more of that student feedback and student ownership in after doing it for a year of having them, especially in our upper elementary, of having them take the lead a little bit too, being an understanding of like, here's where I'm at within this module or unit and different areas that I could use some support in.
It's also a progression of, you know, as they get to, you know, middle school and into high school, traveling classes and things like that, like it's essentially that. I mean, I guess they have a little bit of that PE as well and for all the other specials, but yeah, I just, it was a different perspective. I wasn't really looking at it from that standpoint of like, well, what are you learning? What are you focusing on? But like, they're like comparing with their friends, oh, I got her today, I got this, you know, and they're just like, it's fun for them.
Yeah, they build a great sense of community around the school. They're getting to know and understand different teachers that are in their building that they may not have known before if they were there, you know, the other couple of years before. So that's been a really great part too. And just teachers and those specialists working so much closer together, really talking about students and then also if they had a concern in reading or math, knowing that, you know what, I have a person that I can go talk to and they're not going to judge me against this, but they're going to be so helpful. So I think that was something that was really great to, good takeaway for us. Thank you. And so now we'll kind of shift gears a little bit into our middle school realm. So the middle school realm, I would say, has a phenomenal MTSS committee group that they have there that's comprised of some special ed teachers, social workers, psych, admins on that as well. And I was really blown away just by their discussions that they were having and how kind of far along within the process they already were. And so what we kind of realized with our MTSS committee at the middle school was we were really looking at kind of like our building wide. We were looking at, you know, kind of the point system, things that we could, you know, kind of work with within that realm. What were we hearing from teachers in regards to behaviors and then how could we support them with an event or different things like that? Where during the year, we realized, you know what, we're missing that individual problem solving time. So our counselors, Kirkley's a counselor, right? They meet with the different teams at the different grade levels at the middle school and they kind of do some of this problem solving with those teams of teachers. If they had, you know, a concern with a student or, you know, a celebration with a student, they talk about those things. But then kind of what we realized is it kind of stopped there. And so what we ended up doing as our middle school MTSS crew was we then created another meeting in our month that was solely focused on that individual problem solving. So we were able to invite a member from that team to come in, talk to us as a group and then able to do a little bit more deeper problem solving with them and able to follow up with them then too. So our counselors didn't feel like they were the only ones there, that teams were able to come in and chat with us too about any student needs and we could work through any of that together. And then this year, on one of our late start Thursdays, Jim was so kind and let us do a data discussion with the middle school. So at the elementary level, we have our day-to-days three times a year where we look at our math data really closely. And so this year, we tried one of the data discussions. And so it was just a brief little discussion, talking about some different data points for departments and teams to kind of look at with their math data. And then as an MTSS team, we also then sent out a follow-up survey after they met with their team. And we just asked them like, based on your data, what kind of goals are you setting up for yourself? What would you as a team or a department want to accomplish? You know, what are some strengths that you saw within your data? And then that kind of goal area, that area of opportunity? And then how can we as an MTSS committee support your team? And based off of that survey, we got some really great responses of like, oh, we noticed this. Or social studies bringing up, hey, we noticed our students were having a harder time with informational texts. Those are skills we can put into our class because we read so much informational texts. Also even just like the allied arts wanting to be involved too because knowing that our students learn in different ways. When we think about like our multiple intelligences and things like that, of getting involved with them also in that way. And so something that kind of we've talked about with our MTSS committee is how could we get kind of that day-to-day at the middle school level for them too? So we can kind of have some of those meaningful conversations together and kind of look at our data and make goals for ourselves. And then the MTSS team's part of it as well as the PLC coalition and then BLT on just working on implementing that intervention block. I know they're working on kind of the scheduling of how that will work there and we just really want things kind of lined up for teachers and hearing teachers' voices throughout that process too. And so when we look at our SMS data, they maintained, we love to see in that eighty to eighty-five percent range of students within that tier one support. And so that was math and then same with reading, just a couple of percentage and then with science as well. And so kind of what we've also talked about as an MTSS team is kind of looking at this and seeing some of our students who were in these different tiers and think about, okay, what can we do to support them? Or what kind of conversations could we have with these teams about those students that we're noticing on our end too and kind of working with them in that realm also? So then just kind of my future focus, this year, this being a new position within the district in my first year in this role, I really had focused on K eight, I would say, a lot more. I had some conversations with the high school, but really this year collaborating a lot more with the high school. They already have a really great structure in place with Spartan Stretch, but just really talking to them about how can really optimize that time for our students and kind of what types of things can we offer them? And so Tim already sent me a little calendar invite for every month. So we'll be meeting every month as a team here. Also collaborating with leave at the early childhood center too, knowing that early intervention is so important for our students and in what ways could I support them there? And also just really focusing on that tier one. Sometimes when we look at our data and we see something that we might not love, we always just want to jump in and like, they need an intervention. When it's, well, let's be reflective of our tier one instruction and what can we do to best support our staff and students when it comes to that? Also just continuing to grow our PLC process. Really one of my biggest takeaways this year was how much PLC and MTSS just really integrate together and the importance of how they rely on each other so much. And so really just continuing to grow that, having those conversations about what are our essential standards as a grade level, but then having that vertical articulation too of just because we might think something's important in fourth grade, is that important in fifth grade? So making sure we have that. Also just a conversation about our assessments, different ways that we can assess students. It doesn't always have to be paper pencil, just different formative ways, whether it's through a different game with a small group and different things like that. And then also our pacing. Team of teachers just actually called me this week and said, we cannot wait to go back in August because we just worked on two of our modules with Lisa to kind of put them together to help with the pacing problem that they had. And they were like, we can't wait to go back because what we just planned out for these students is going to be incredible. So also just in regards to pacing and what we're teaching and how we're teaching it. But then also just really honoring the process of knowing that we just started this year. And so I kind of view this as like our launch year, that we now really have people just in place and in positions to make an impact and to respond to data. We've never looked at data through this lens before, that we're able to have those conversations and make a little bit more of a plan with the use of our coaches and with our admin about different ways that we could support our teachers and our students. And then just some celebrations, really just the collaboration among all of our specialists, fed teachers and classroom teachers. They just really did an amazing job approaching student learning and being so focused on what was best for them. Implementation of WIN was a celebration. I think we had some struggles with it too, but I think you have to embrace those struggles sometimes to really grow through things. And then focusing our conversation on data and just really how we can utilize that and how we can take our map data to inform our instruction or take our formative assessments to really inform our instruction. And then, you know, that was some feedback that we even got from staff of like, okay, how can I take this data to now, you know, group students for WIN or support my instruction? And so Lisa and Jen were then able to go in intense staff meetings and present on that to give teachers some ideas on that. And also just our incredible staff and administrators, kind of what we've been talking about all night is we've just had such incredible talented teachers and educators and administrators in our district that are here for the right reasons. And so they're just always asking great questions and just wanting to do the very best for our students here. So thank you. Do you guys have any questions or anything for me?
Well, I was a little surprised by the data from the middle school, especially given the fact that they work in a team model. And I would, I think I expected them to have a better process already developed where they could identify the students that needed, you know, some more help. And their numbers really, I mean, they pale in comparison to the elementary school.
Right, and I think so much of that too is at the elementary, we utilize math data a whole lot. And at the middle school, I think that's kind of an opportunity for us. So when we had that one day-to-day discussion, one of the topics that came out of it was even some training on math. And so Chris was able to provide that for the middle school too, to do that. And I think it's just bringing that awareness of how can we pull from this and impact from it? And then our MTSS team too, we also talked about like, is that a trend among other middle schools? Is that a common theme? And so that's something we're going to be looking at too this school year.
Yeah, because, I mean, they have the team process in place, they have a very strong PLC community and this looks, I mean, this is kind of contrary to both of those. So hopefully it'll grow along with those other two.
Yeah, I believe in that too.
You talked about, you alluded to some struggles with WIN and I'm not trying to shine a spotlight on those.
No, you're fine.
But more from learning as you have, what kind of struggles? Is it like scheduling or is it we want more resources or more time?
You know, I think a little bit mix of everything you just said. So one of our things was when it comes to kind of that planning and that collaboration, we realized that we did need more time. So we have our late start Thursdays for PLC and so teams use that within their buildings, but then also district-wide. And that also gave time for them to collaborate with our specialists on discussing students. And then at our elementary level, we have two staff meetings a month. And so the principals also gave them the second staff meeting of the month as additional time to talk about that, utilize data and different discussions around that. So time was a factor in planning, but then I would also say an intervening of making sure that those students who did need, you know, that forty-minute reading intervention, that they were receiving that. So we did make some shifts and some changes, like at the upper elementary, if there were students who, you know, scored above the twenty-fifth percentile, who didn't need a reading intervention, taking those resources back at the primary level, who, you know, would benefit from another dose or a different group of, you know, foundational skills there. So that was something we kind of learned about too. And then also like the scheduling aspect. Everyone would love more time with their students too of being able to give them like a thirty-minute reading and a thirty-minute math in regards to WIN. And so just figuring out how we balance that along with the core instruction too is something that I'm working with the building principals with this summer.
Is there, did students express a desire to have help with other subjects besides reading and math?
That's kind of where we started with, but I would love, and Steve and I talked about this too, of talking about writing. You know, we know some students struggle with that. So is there a way that we can build that in? Also really that social emotional learning part, that SEL component is something I'm hoping we can really build into for our students of helping them within those different areas. I mean, and it would be great if we could offer like a stem lab where they could come and create with that science area. Like, I mean, the sky's the limit for us and what I would love for us to accomplish. But I do think there's different interests and avenues of things that we could get kids excited about too.
And my last question, is students who need to be stretched and challenged, is, are they being addressed or is that something that's still being built into this?
I would say that's something that's being built into it. We definitely had more schools who would, who did a little bit more of an enrichment group or like daily, or they would pull a certain set of students like Monday through Thursday, but then on Fridays meet with that group who needed a little bit more of a stretch. So we were being a little bit more creative with our planning of that, but that is definitely something that we want to build into because so much of MTSS isn't about just like intervening, but also enriching.
Right.
And so also making sure staff feels comfortable with that and they have that understanding and resources available to support students too.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Just one question. So the enrichment versus intervening piece is kind of what I was thinking. And so I don't know a lot about the hands-on piece to this and, you know, you're the expert. So I would just, I'm thinking in terms of like, with such a limited amount of resources that like a school district has, would, do you see like a future model of MTSS looking like focused on enrichment and not on intervention at all? And the intervention, basically the baseline standard for all instruction is intervention more or less, so that's your, that's your baseline. And then if we had just focus groups on intervention only, would that serve, would we be able to serve more people efficiently doing something like that? I'm just, again, I'm thinking in terms of.
Right, I would have to look into that too, just because I feel like it's really just about approaching all students where they're at and what they need. So I don't know if we would get to.
Well, and that's why I'm just saying there's so, there's, I imagine there are fewer students who need enrichment, more students who need intervention. So if that logic holds true, we can, if you, if you repurpose the system so it's not trying to pick up all the interventions, but instead your teachers are, they, that is your intervention group and your specialists are only working within now smaller group of people, so you would need fewer specialists and you'd have small, again, smaller groups that you're actually bringing up. And then would that, I mean, to me, that would raise the whole system. Again, I don't.
Right, and so that's where we really talk about like our tier one too of like what everyone receives. And so oftentimes teachers will differentiate and be flexible based off of like, here is the expectation of what I should be teaching for this lesson, but my students might already know that or maybe they need a little bit more support. And so they do a pretty good job too right now with kind of addressing some of those needs too of adjusting their lessons based on their student needs too. But I see what you're saying of kind of that.
Well, that's like, call me a dreamer, maybe this is something we couldn't do, but what, I mean, I would just be interested to see what like a study would look like with an elementary school where the focus is enrichment group and then the baseline is that intervention. that intervention for all teachers, that's what they're administering. And we're pulling out the students that we're looking to enrich, while at the same time, we're leaving the students who need intervention in the classroom.
Right.
And that way, I think, again, just talking in numbers.
Right.
Would the efficacy of that one model be better than the intervention piece? And again, I don't know. Maybe there's research on it, maybe not, or, but.
Yeah. Great point. Great something to think about.
I'm, I'm just gonna jump in because I think I know exactly what you're talking about. And one of the things I've learned over the years is that the enrichment group is always smaller, I think, in general. But the students who are part of that group, and students may need enrichment in math, but then they need intervention in reading. So sometimes those, those students do move back and forth a little bit. So I think the tricky part is just being flexible enough, that depending on what the content is that you're teaching. And I think it's a little easier in terms of structure and schedule at the elementary level, correct me if I'm wrong, because you've got kind of a finite group of students. One of the challenges is, you know, staffing, and how do we use the staff that we have in maybe a different way? And I think the other piece is structure. So for many years, decades, you know, the research on differentiated instruction and individualizing instruction has been out there, but the shift is a, is a big one. You know, you're talking about teachers who've been trained to do one thing, now asking them to do something different. I was trained to teach chemistry. I'll never forget observing a chemistry teacher who did that. She took a group of 25 students in her class every single day, grouped them together at the beginning, took attendance, made a couple announcements, and then let them go. And there was a group who was working on one task in one corner, another group working on another task in another corner. And she would float between those groups. The challenge from an instructional level is, how do you, how do you lesson plan for that? That's a huge lift. It's a huge shift for, for teachers. And I can remember, you know, still being in college, watching that, thinking, oh my gosh. She, she had it down because she'd done it for so long. It was just really orchestrating. But you have to get to know your students, so that's where the individual data comes in, comes into play. And then just kind of, you're doing some tap dancing almost every day, just getting a feel for where students are at, checking in with them. And now, could we, could we build more enrichment in? Absolutely. And I think, you know, your question, Chris was good. And, you know, I think that's an area of growth for us. But I think one thing that, that I'm interested in is we continue to shift to what teaching looks like in the classroom on an, on an average day, a normal day. It's not a teacher standing in front of 25 students at the same time anymore.
Right.
It's a teacher with 25 students grouping them. And that grouping changes, you know, every 10 or 15 minutes or every day or every class period. So I, I remind myself, because we've talked about this many times, I've talked with other staff in the district, I'd like for this to happen like, can we get this by August? Can we just figure this out by August? It's a marathon.
Yeah.
And, and it kind of comes in waves. And there are times, we've talked, you know, the admin team has talked about, you know, gosh, this has got to be better. We're not making progress. And here we are at the end of the year, looking back and realizing, wow, WIN was a win. You know, when we worked through some of these struggles and learned, we did it better in, in May than we did in, in September. And we'll do it better in August and just continue moving forward. But it's imperative that students that need enrichment get just as much attention as students who need academic support to kind of build up. So those are things that, that we need to focus on, for sure.
It's continually improving. Like, I don't think this work ever really gets done. I think just based off of feedback and student needs, we're just constantly improving and providing what we can for them. Throughout this year, I was in a lot of conversation with Cane Land and their MTSS programming. They're still a little bit further ahead than us with what they're doing. And so in conversations with them, I was talking to their curriculum director, Dr. Mumm, and just one of the things that she really said to me that really just resonated, that I always tell teachers, is she's like, "Listen, I don't want my teachers going home and spending hours upon hours planning. I want them to understand and realize the resources that they have available within their room, and then that's their teaching. And that's how they're approaching, because they know they have this resource and they understand that. And then that's what they're using to support those students." And so again, that's kind of like just that shift in thinking of approaching it. And like you said, we would love to just like go for it, but knowing we also have to honor our process of getting there. So.
I just think the better we get at, at utilizing MAP and MAP data, the better we'll get, get at identifying those students that, that would really benefit from enrichment. And I think that we need to look at it in a, in a more expansive way, in the sense that I don't know that those students that need enrichment need as much direct supervision.
Right.
They need more opportunity and time, I think.
Yes.
They need somebody to oversee it all. But I think they can work, you know, they're at the level where they can...
Pretty collaboratively together, yeah.
Yeah, they can work right on their own.
Right.
In advance, as long as they have somebody to help them pull it together once they're, once they're there. But, you know, I, I really think that in this day and age, we really need to support, you know, those kind of students. And, and, you know, Chuck Schwann always said, "Let your, let your fast runners run."
Right.
They need to run. And, and when you get out into the world, that's, that's what happens. I mean, it's, you know, your people, you know, people you work with, you're looking for the people that are gonna, they're gonna run, they're gonna fly. And, and, you know, so this is a way of keeping them involved, keeping them interested, not letting them get bored. But also teaching them essential skills for what they're going to see in the future.
Right.
I mean, you know, you know, if we can kind of cultivate that ability to sort of learn on their own, or learn with others in a group, or, or, you know, kind of do it with minimal supervision, then they're going to make the transition into college very, very smoothly.
Definitely.
Whereas a lot of other people are gonna have a little bumpy ride, because it takes you a little while to realize that you're not going to get as much attention once you, you know, once you get to that level. So, so yeah, I, I mean, I think, I see that there's a, really, there's a lot of room there to maybe reinvent a little bit and not kind of limit ourselves to, you know, one-on-one kind of interventions or, or one teacher with one small group, but maybe to broaden that out.
Yeah, definitely.
Molly, one more question.
Yeah, of course.
About COVID. Did you or did anyone compare data from like our fifth graders this year to what they were doing in third grade?
I didn't pull anything.
It's the whole learning loss.
Right. I haven't looked at the previous data. Sometimes with MAP, it like cuts you off after a certain year too, of being able to like pull those reports.
Yeah, I was just interested.
But this data that we're seeing is grade level data. It's, it's where they should be.
Yeah. So each of those reports are building level data, kind of how they've done. And then when I work with the admin, we look at a little bit more granular with the grade level data and their teams and different things like that. And then we have those conversations about students or trends that we're noticing in different ways that we can support them. And I think it's great now that we're building our capacity with this data, because now we will have it.
Right.
We have one person that's looking at that for our whole district and able to compile all of that information in like one little hub for us, to then have that for years to come.
Do we hear, do we hear concern about learning loss from parents still, like in the spring of this past year?
I mean, no parents had reached out to me or anything like that. And, I mean, a teacher, none of the teachers have really reached out to me about that.
Voice of offense.
Yeah. I don't know if anyone reached out.
You know, we've talked about learning disruption a lot. I would caution anybody to talk about, not talk about learning loss with, with educators, because I, I think, you know, what we've learned, initially, that's what it was. You know, we're losing this time. So, and really, what, what you hear pretty regularly, regularly about the last year or so is that it was disrupted, you know? COVID disrupted learning, and that set us back a little bit. But I don't, I don't hear a lot about it. There are specific cases where maybe it impacted some students a little bit more than others. But I think the other reason we don't hear about it a lot is that it was so universal.
True.
You know, it wasn't just Sycamore or Cal or Cane Land. It, everybody dealt with it. So it was just something that everybody's kind of had to figure out a way to get through.
Which makes me think that, you know, as much as the teachers had to deal with in the last two years.
Right.
I think it's been overwhelming, just from hearing what people have to say. And to me, the data, I was pretty happy because I know as much as they've had upon them, they've really risen to the occasion, or kids have risen to the occasion. So that makes me happy to see some. And I know the middle school's not great, but, you know, there's a large number of kids, and there's, you know, middle school's an entity of itself.
You have to defend the middle school. Our score is in the eighties. Three other schools that are in the seventies who may have went up, our scores are still higher. And I have all five of those schools in the middle school. So I would have to defend my teachers if they're doing very well.
Absolutely.
Go, Jim.
Incredible.
Yeah, no, I, I, my comments weren't a criticism. They were just that I think that we're going to see even greater growth there as this concept scroll, because, you know, I think they, they, they kind of have a really good grasp on the, you know, the team system. They have the PLC. And now this is like the third part of the puzzle that they just need put, to put together. And I think, really gonna take off.
I think we've always struggled with springtime scores, middle school, because we have kids that do not want to test come May, and we can just test in May.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're gonna test.
I wondered about that.
Like, 10% of those just decide they're not gonna do it, or just take it easy. Those scores are...
I don't like to test in May.
I mean, we did IAR and math both in the last month. I mean, those kids are nothing but tests. And then we throw in a couple of surveys on top of it. And I'm like, they don't care if it's in front of a computer anymore. So I know that we're losing 10 to 15% of them that just click buttons and say, "See how quick I can get through it." Well, this stuff will tell them it's important. Because they're like, "Yeah, I'm going on anyways, whether I pass this test or not."
Yes, sure.
Did I hear you say though, that MAP, the program, cuts you off from data after a certain period of time?
Yes. You can like only go back to look at certain reports for like X amount of years. And so we have five lab to, within our district, where we kind of have a little bit of a data warehouse. So that's something I would just have to look into a little bit more also.
Because that seems counterproductive to what we've been talking about, about having longitudinal data.
Right.
If you can't go back and look at it, then what's the point of having it?
Right.
So, you know, and if you're gonna track a cohort from kindergarten to eighth grade, let's say, you should be able to look at all those years.
Definitely.
And see where...
Being able to pull it all up.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Definitely.
That, that concerns me a little bit.
And it's something we can bring up to our rep too.
Yeah.
Of letting them know. I'm sure we aren't the only district.
More data, more data will be helpful. I'm sorry, we can't go back there.
Right. Well, thank you, everyone.
Anyway, I forgot some when I left the office tonight, and that was my computer. So I'm gonna stand up here at the desktop to go through these last two items. Before I do that, Molly, just thanks again. It was a lot of work and, and the data was...
No problem.
I know we've talked about seeing empirical data, as Jim mentioned. And, and when Molly was putting the presentation together and we reviewed it, I said, "The board's gonna like that. They're gonna like looking at numbers." And as well as the anecdotal as well. So appreciate all of that.
Yeah, thank you.
So the next two items, first of all is 7.03, Board Policy Revisions. No vote on this tonight, no action. Jim and Steve and I met on June 10th to go over the most recent policy updates. I'll let Jim and Steve talk about that in just a minute. But the one thing I, the one policy I do want to draw everybody's attention to when you review the policies is Policy 2230. But it has to do with public participation at, at board meetings. And the last two years have been pretty bumpy at board meetings. I was a little nervous when I pulled up and saw the cars in the parking lot. I was a little, on the agenda tonight, brought back, brought back that nervous tick I had. But what we've done is kind of waited for an opportune time to have this discussion. And this policy happened to be one of the policy revisions that was included in this press update. So we did add some, some language to that, that policy in terms of not ceding time, tightening up that a little bit. One kind of disclaimer, there is language in that policy that allows the board by majority vote to deviate from, from how public participation is handled. So if there's a meaningful comment that takes longer than the three to five minutes, the board can vote on that if this policy is approved. But I didn't want to go through all the language here. It's not up for a vote this evening, it's first reading. What I would encourage everybody to do is just make sure you take a look at 2230 in specific. But I would encourage you all to look through all of the policies as well. Jim and Steve, do you have anything to add?
I, I mean, I think that there were probably two major policies that, that were in this particular packet. A lot of, a lot of the packets we get, including this one, just sort of do like a five-year update, where they, where they update citations to statutes and redo some footnotes and things like that. Yeah, change, change some language. But the 2230 is, is one of the important ones. And what 2230 says, and what the attorneys have, have said in, in commenting on this, and I mean the IASB attorneys, they say that you can no longer just have like a handout about audience participation. You have to have it in your policy, exactly what you're gonna do. And they make some recommendations, and we, we pretty much followed their recommendations. They suggest that you actually mark out a time for how much time you're gonna devote to public comment at your meeting. So not only do you limit the time that each person speaks, but you limit the overall time that you're gonna devote out of your meeting. So, you know, half hour, I think is what we are suggesting.
Thirty-five.
And that, that's what Steve was saying, can be changed. If we, you know, if we have a, a big issue and there's a lot of people and they want to talk to us, then we can always increase that. But for the most part, there'll be a 30-minute limitation. We'll stick with the three-minute for each speaker. No ceding of time, which is one of their recommendations as well, which means that each speaker gets three minutes and can't say, "I'm giving my three minutes to so-and-so or so-and-so." What are some of the other suggestions that they made? They, they did say that we should have a sign-in sheet, which we, we have and will continue to do that. And they did say that we should encourage the audience that if there are a large number of people who are addressing the board on one single issue, and their comments are all basically the same, that they appoint a spokesperson to make the presentation, rather than have, you know, 15 or, you know, 20 people or however many people come up and say the same thing over and over again. So, you know, again, it's all about the concept that this is not a public meeting. People always kind of think of this as a public meeting, in the sense that we're here to, that's the only thing we want to do, is hear public opinion. It's really a business meeting that's held in public. And it's because we respect the public so much that we allow them to comment at all. Because, you know, when you think about other business meetings, you'd never have an opportunity to speak to a corporate board or anything like that when they're conducting a business. But we allow for that. And, and we want to continue to allow for that. And we want to hear their comments. But we want to do it in a way that's, that's efficient for us and for them as well. So that is really an important, or one of the bigger policies. The other one really deals with, and this would be Policy 7285, but there, but there are a lot of instances where it comes into play with some of these other policies. And that is the anaphylaxis prevention response. And for districts that keep a supply of anaphylaxis, syringes or, or, you know...
Epidemics.
Epidemics. We would, you know, we, we have certain procedures now that we have to follow. And I think most of, most of those we already do, but, you know, the, the law is pretty plain, and we'll have to make sure that it becomes part of our policy and then that, that we are actually performing those policy functions with regard to the epidemics.
And training involved.
Yeah, and all the training that's involved as well. So, those are, those are the big ones in, in this particular pamphlet. I don't know if you have anything else?
No, you're covered.
So, no, I think that's good. I think that we're, I think are addressing it and tightening up that process. And I, I think it can be viewed as restrictive from the public standpoint. Like, it won't sit in the public, like, oh, they're restricted, they don't want to hear me. But I'm gonna be honest, in going through the past couple of years, the more meaningful, not, not to say, I listen to everything, I read all the emails, all of that, it's, it's easier for me at an email, where I can read something, read a person's opinion, reflect back to it weeks later, file it away, whatever. That, that's such a more meaningful way to communicate, in my opinion, or just from my perspective, than three minutes at a board meeting, where you may get cut off, or you're trying to rush yourself or whatever. So I don't really receive this as being restrictive. We don't want to hear from the public or anything from that nature. Use the other resources available to you to get your point across. It's so, I mean, I've had, you know, parents send resources or whatever. I mean, that can all be done in an email forum. And, I mean, I think as a board, I think all of us are, are committed to looking through, through the, the public's opinions and things like that. So I think, I think it's great. And I heard some horror stories... I think, I think it's great. And I heard some horror stories, I mean, from other districts where meetings were going to 1:00 AM and 2:00 AM on public comments alone. And not even getting to anything. And, and being basically sitting and looking for, like going to the triple I conference and basically saying, how do we have a board meeting? Like we can't even have a board meeting. And so to hear some of this, writing that in a way to still give districts the ability to mold this and, you know, create more time for public comment when needed, um, I think is great. So that's fantastic. For all the stuff that, that I may not agree with, uh, this is good that they've, they've put some, uh, put this in there and I'm glad we're addressing it.
And, and I will say that the IASB puts on, um, a presentation where they kind of explain their positions in the press pamphlet. And, uh, it's, it's, um, run by, um, their lead counsel. And there are two attorneys that also work in the press office. And all three of those attorneys address these issues. And, um, so a lot of the things that we do simply reflect what their recommendations are. Most of those recommendations are set out in here, but they, they go into a little more depth when they, they do the presentations. So, uh, we sit through those presentations and then we discuss those. And that's where we come out with our recommendations for the board. So.
So this will be obviously our policy, but then obviously not everyone in the community is going to read our policy. So is there going to be, like we had a, in the past, we've had that handout?
We, we will have a handout, but we have to also, it has to also be in our policy.
And I understand that completely. I just want to, you know, because most people-
Yeah, no, we will continue to have the handout, but we can't just have the handout. It has to be in the policy. So, I mean, that's it, I think, for first reading and then we'll see what comments we get. Next meeting, we'll hopefully, uh, have the second reading and go through it then. Again.
Okay. If you have any comments, uh, let Jim or Steve or myself know. Otherwise we'll take a look at that at the, uh, the next meeting in July. Uh, the last item under superintendent's report is future focused. And I just wanted to do a little bit more follow-up on district goals. Just want to highlight a couple of points when it comes to identifying goals and, and the importance both in personal and professional lives. You know, identifying goals drives efforts within an organization or your, your personal life. Communicated and shared, shared goals align efforts within an organization. Known goals also drive the collection of data and evidence to monitor the goals. And, and, uh, you guys have all heard what, you know, what you measure gets monitored, right? You know, what you measure and what you collect data on is what becomes most meaningful. Um, and then ongoing and regularly developing, monitoring, assessing and revising goals, um, just promotes organizational effectiveness. So with that in mind, as a reminder, the board admin team met on April 19th, we developed a, a set of district goals. Originally, there were five areas that we looked at. Um, what I did was kind of condense those just a little bit and down to three areas. One of the things we talked about doing is just really trying to streamline our efforts and, and focus, uh, what we're doing. Um, so that we're not kind of in too many different directions. But the three areas that I'll kind of go through tonight include everything that was discussed in those five areas originally after, at the, the board meeting. The other thing that's really important, uh, that I'm working on this year is that these goals permeate throughout the district. So, uh, these goals will become part of my performance goals in, in my contract. They will be taken on by the building, each of the buildings. You'll see some of these goals are, um, letting themselves more to, to buildings than some are, are more kind of district oriented. But these goals will kind of drive everything throughout the district. It's not that there won't be other initiatives that we're working on, but, but these will be the, the main focus. So the three areas are education, operations and communication. Um, one of the things that, that we've talked about and Molly discussed this a little bit is just identifying, you know, clear criteria when we're measuring our, uh, student's growth or achievement and our success. That's really addressed in, in both, uh, in goal number two. Prior to that, we have to make sure that we've got a viable curriculum, uh, consistent and rigorous curriculum. So we do have a curriculum. It's not that we don't have a curriculum. I just want to go on record as saying that. Uh, we do have a curriculum and, and every content area, all grade levels. But one of the things that's also included here is we want to, we want to make sure that it's accessible to our students. The last goal under education is developing a framework, um, of systems and procedures to measure the success or failure of programs or initiatives. Hey, talking about failure, but the fact of the matter is that sometimes an initiative or program doesn't work quite as well as we would like it to. Or sometimes it just becomes outdated. How do we measure that? How do we identify those programs so that we can reallocate resources to use in a different way? The second area is operations. Um, right at the top of the list, uh, kind of a financial goal is maintaining a balanced budget. And the district has worked really, really hard for several years to do that and been through some painful processes to get there. Uh, but that's going to be an ongoing goal. Uh, the district will pursue alternative funding for innovative programs. So if there's an innovative program out there and we know that we've got a finite budget, are there other resources out there that we can tap into, whether it's grants or other funding that might become available? So, uh, that's one of the things that's included. Uh, and we get a lot of questions about the facilities and what our plan is for the facilities. We actually have a facilities plan. Um, it's a couple of years old now. Our architects helped us develop that, but we do have a, a facilities plan. It's pretty comprehensive. It's pretty complex, but we've got one. So part of what we'll do this year is just make sure that we're communicating that to our stakeholders. That plan includes prioritized list of ongoing projects, uh, plan for potential growth in student enrollment. Uh, we want to make sure that we're ready for that. If that's indeed what happens, there's a lot of economic growth in, in our area. So if we start to see student growth and enrollment, we just want to make sure that we're ready for that. Uh, and then a plan for all of our school buildings being, uh, 21st century learning environments. The last area is communication. Uh, this has been a, a hot topic. We've talked with Lauren Holter, the communications director, about this quite a bit. This is something that is a priority for her. Um, but it's not just something that communications will work on. It's something that the entire district will work on. So the first goal is developing a communications plan for all stakeholders, students, staff and our community. And one of the things that Lauren and I have already talked about is developing that plan in a way that, um, we can use that at the district level. Principals and staff can use that at the building level. Um, and we can get information out to, to homes and to families, community, the community members that may not have, uh, students enrolled in our schools. But getting that out so that we can kind of guide and help and support any staff member in the district who's communicating out to the public. And then the second goal in communication is hosting events to showcase the successes in the district. Uh, making sure that those are open to the public. And we do some, some of those things are ready. Uh, Jim, the one thing that always comes to mind when I think of this is, uh, science night at the middle school. It's incredible. A building was packed. There were students and parents waiting to get in when the, when the doors opened. We already have some of these events, uh, but we want to make sure that we continue those events and maybe look at other opportunities where we can invite the public in. The other one here at the high school is the, the art show. So before one of the board meetings, there was, there was an art show in the gallery out front. It was awesome to walk through that and see our students' work. So, um, part of it is planning those events and hosting them. The other piece is marketing and communicating so that the, the community knows you can come for the board meeting after, but at 6 o'clock, there, there's an art, you know, an art show in the high school. So make sure you come out and see that. So those are the three areas. Again, it used to be five. We condensed them down to, to these three. Uh, but I think that helps us to focus our efforts a little bit more. And those are really, when I think of, uh, the operation or, or, uh, the administration of a school district, it really is education first and then operations, you know, the, the bussing, the food service, whatever else goes, goes into that. Uh, but communication is another really important piece too, I think. So I think we've got that down to a pretty focused level. So what I wanted to do is just review those, kind of remind everybody that these will be used throughout the district. Uh, these are 22, 23 goals. So at some point in, in the next year, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll monitor our progress. We'll talk about our progress and we'll start to refine those. A lot of these goals are kind of yes, no. Did you develop a communications plan? If you've done that, you check it off. Uh, if we didn't get to that for whatever reason, what, what was that reason? And we need to make sure that we get that in the next go around. So my experience with things like this is that some of these goals will be accomplished next year. Hopefully a lot of them, but probably not all. So we'll cross off the ones that, that we achieve. Uh, the communications plan, I think is a really good example. I've talked with Lauren Holt about that several times. I have every confidence that we'll have a communications plan developed this school year. That goal gets crossed off. We'll continue to monitor that plan. Uh, but goals in communication, then what, what's the next step? Once we've got that plan, how can we ensure that it's being used properly? And what's the next step with, uh, communication? So that's something that we'll do this year. We'll monitor, we'll assess, we'll revise. Uh, and then we'll have a different set of goals for the 23, 24 school year, hopefully. But I'll pause there for a second and ask for any questions or, or comments.
I'm really excited about this. I, I think all of these goals really encompass everything that we've, we've been working on and it really resonates with me. And, uh, again, just kind of seeing them all laid out like this is, uh, it's a bit endearing and, and it's exciting. So.
Well, thank you. I, I appreciate that. And, and one of the things I realized as we've worked on these goals is some of these things are in progress already. So it's not that we're starting from scratch and, and, you know, like the facilities plan. We have that. We just need to do a better job of communicating that. And then we need to go back and look at it and mark off the things that are done and, and look at other opportunities to, to, uh, work on our, our environment. But a lot of this is, is in progress already. I think the other advantage of goals like this is that we may not have realized that those were in progress already. You know, that, that the facilities plan is another good example. Heard from a lot of people who, who really think that we just really don't have any idea what we're doing with our facilities and we're just kind of willy-nilly working on projects. There is one, but again, that's, that's our fault for not communicating it. Um, but, but it's already in progress. So we just need to do a better job of sharing that.
Well, and again, from my perspective, being new to the board, seeing, you know, kind of a, a leader in crisis through COVID and now seeing what, what is, you know, a non-crisis leadership model look like for a district. Uh, so this is kind of in my mind what, what it would be.
Yeah, I agree. It's nice to talk about these things. Uh, there's a big chunk of the last, my two years here, for some of you a little bit longer than that, that we haven't been able to focus on this as much. But I think we're, we're in a place to be able to do that, which is really exciting. That's the last item under superintendent's report. So I'll turn it back over to Jim.
Uh, next item then is, uh, open discussion and future agenda items. Any open discussion items or questions? Anything for future agenda?
I wanted to throw out one thing or one topic that I, I'd like to get some type of presentation or more information on, um, is, uh, in regards to school safety. And just, I mean, and I, maybe some of that information is not something we'd want to put out there for the public, specific on how things work, but just making sure that at least myself as a board member has a good understanding that the district is, you know, exploring all options, using, you know, you know, as, you know, more technologies built to keep the school safe, keep our students safe, keep our staff safe. It, it, it's an important, uh, it's an important thing in light of a lot of stuff that has gone on over the past couple of years. How do we, how, how does that process work? I really don't know much. I don't think we've gotten, uh, any type of that information as a board, or at least in my time here. Or, or much of it, or maybe it's been sprinkled in, but a, a specific presentation on that. Um, so at some point I'd just like to put that, I'd put that out there and put that under, I don't know if you're, if you're-
Yes, we should see if we could do that in executive session because that is an item that you don't want to, um, you know.
Publishing your most friends.
Sure. But I mean, then having a better understanding of like, hey, X amount of time during the year, we, we talk to other schools about how they handle things and we collaborate in this and, or we talk about this or this and that. How that whole process works, I mean, or personally as, in, in a financial institution where I'm in charge of our active shooter training as well as our robbery response training. And there's a process for me throughout the year where I've got to dig and get more information. What has changed industry-wide? What can we be doing? You know, what doesn't work for us, but what could work for us? Like, how does that process work? And do we do enough of that? Um, and just getting some of those answers as well. So not, maybe not all the specifics, but kind of the behind the scenes behind it of what, what we do to make sure that we're, we're staying up to date with some of the stuff that's out there. We go to triple I conference, there's a thousand different things that are for classrooms and some of them you kind of shake your head out of, that would never work. And some of them you're like, oh, that's intriguing. How do we get that information and things like that? So I think what I might do is start with, um, providing some written information to the board because some of that is information we don't want public, but then highlighting some of the points that are, you know, okay for, for public consumption, doing that at an upcoming board meeting. Yeah, that'd be great.
Other future agenda items? Anything else? I need a motion, uh, motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline or dismissal of personnel, matters related to individual students, purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, negotiations and imminent litigation.
Second.
And seconded, roll call.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. We'll go into executive session and then return back to open session for our final votes. All right. Uh, is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to accept the, uh, um, hearing officer's, uh, recommendation concerning, um, student discipline matter?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much for attending. Thanks, everybody.